We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Now, I'm not usual to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is the reading of the minutes from the last meeting. But I think we need to go down to old business D before we do that, just to make sure the minutes are read and interpreted correctly based on that discussion. Which would be the Renaissance application for Olson Hardware. In the minutes, we had... We had several discussions on it, but the minutes itself for that motion was...
Do you want me to say the motion? I've got it up on the big screen if you want to look up there, too.
So Commissioner Sather made the motion to approve the application as-is. Commissioner Gary seconded and it passed with no one voting no. So we, I know Nicole had been working on some of it on the backside, just making sure that everything was done, and so is that okay?
Well, it says income tax, yes, property tax, and there's nothing next to that one. And so my...I couldn't hear very well, all I got was income tax. So I don't know what anyone else had that seen.
Well, we talked about it, but the actual motion is, is that approve the application as-is, so it'd be as submitted.
Yeah, and so Casey and I did a walk through this and read into the development plan, because this is a really good example for any time this happens, if this happens again in the future. Because this one was a unique, this was very unique. The Renaissance Zone, according to our development plan, says that you can approve it as long as you approve it before purchase is made. It was a little interesting, the situation, because June 1st, they actually took over like the inventory and stuff, but the deed has not been transferred or sealed yet, which means they technically haven't purchased the building yet. So this was a very unique situation. The way we're reading the development plan, though, is there were some things for like, you know, the auditors and the assessor's office to do stuff with, but after we've had good lengthy discussions with the state and our development plan, it sounds like it is okay to pass this one. So I just wanted to confirm what we found out.
So as long as we're okay with what's in the motion that says written, because this will go on his official record, then we won't need to do anything with it, down the item, but I just want to make sure it was clarified before we approved it, and then we had to go back and try to change it.
I believe that's how we operate, because the application notes that they're purchasing to off first, which is what we relied on to clarify your property tax to see if you can hear it. Our plan says it's progressive, we'll give you a property tax exemption if you make improvements or fix something up as capital improvements, and it's listed in the item. The application notes no improvements, so it'll be zero.
Any questions on that? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes unless you have any other changes?
Make the motion.
Dave makes the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Should I be saying it for the last time?
Pardon?
Shouldn't you be saying for the last time?
For the last time, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the bills. Do you know which ones?
Yeah. 27506, I'm assuming, it says WTP at the end of it, but I'm a portion of that is mine.
27506?
Yeah. And let's get the one. 27519, over to, I just now noticed. Is the pool mine, or is that somebody else's?
That's mine.
Okay.
Looks like Granger Dave had signed off on, if you want to see that one.
Granger's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Perfect. 27519, can you see that one?
27 what?
519.
That might have been electric, Paul, maybe. Did you have that one, Paul?
I don't know, particular company, you know.
Uh, 27519 for...
27519?
Yeah, we've got all four.
27519?
27519.
519.
Yeah.
That's fucked up in mine. Sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't.
Yeah, we've got both, so I just...
I didn't get it just yet.
I didn't get that one, or that one mine, or something. That was Jason's, okay. Perfect. Okay, I was off on that one. All right, that's all I got.
Just testing to make sure.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item is delinquent bills.
I'll make the motion.
Jason makes motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries. You guys want to open up the monthly, the bills, or the financials? Is there any questions on it? If there's no questions or concerns, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved by Jason, seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries. Commissioners reports, we'll start with Jason tonight.
Uh, the only thing I have is on the dogs, I talked to the sheriff earlier, and he still has not gotten a definitive answer, yes or no, or what it would cost from circle of events. That's all that I have.
Paul?
I have nothing.
Dave?
I have nothing.
Nicole?
I have nothing this time.
Dave, you make me want to say I have nothing, but I can't. I can't. Um, pool is hopefully going to be open tomorrow. So that is the goal. If, I think she got everything, everybody through that she needed to, to get trained for the day. Make sure that the life cards that we have are going to be safe. She wanted to do that before we let them loose, the kids coming in, so it should be open, and I'm sure we'll send it out on social media. The pool slide, I know we've talked about it before, it got taken out this year, till it's moved out. I hope to get it back in, but I would like approval to take that up to either Grand Forks or Fargo, to get a set of steps made for it. As long as you get it approved, first, take it, figure out what it's going to cost, and then go from there. Because the steps that are on it right now are the residential, so they're almost straight up, and that's the issue, we got to have commercial. If you go to any other pool, it's kind of a gradual, like normal steps going on. So that's what we have to work, if we want it back in.
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion. Seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yeses for me?
Should be.
It was. The computer died. So soon as it restarts.
It went out?
Eventually.
They'll test that, if they're not.
I also had Casey order a hotspot for down there, because the home line last year got cut at some point. We don't know when. Could have been on our project, and when we put the stuff in, last year I let him use one of my, I put in a cellphone and let him use it, just so we had it and going, and we had a phone out there. So it was forwarded this year, Casey ordered, or Sarah was going to order it, work on getting a hotspot, so they have internet and have it part of our phone system we have at the office. That way we can shut it off at the end of the season, we don't have to worry about it. So we'll get that, just so you're aware of that. On the beautification side, I do need a motion to approve to have the trees taken out. We had two bids, one for fifteen thousand and one for twenty-five thousand. The fifteen thousand was with cars, the twenty-five thousands was with Bow Street Service, which we used in the past. We've used them both. I think we only got, was there four or five, Paul? Remember? Of all the trees that we looked at, there was only four or five that didn't.
I know there wasn't too many.
There wasn't very many, so as long as...
Probably more people asking to be there for it.
Probably. There was a few that said, we'll take this one out, too.
It's going to grant money for that.
It is grant money, I just need approval, because it is above the threshold.
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul.
For the cars, is it?
For cars.
Cars, yeah.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Just so you're aware, on the planning and zoning side, there was a couple things that we're asking A2S to look into it for us, to make sure that everything's done right. One is on a property that's going to be filling in some dirt, to make sure that we have the right culverts and everything put in, and that's going on in over by the park, or by the softball field. And then the other thing we asked them to look at, and I think I mentioned it last time, was they're looking at filling in the ditch over at the campground, so same thing, what size culverts, those things. So we're asking the A2S to make sure that everything is correct when we do that. That one didn't come on the last time, either. So I was just...okay. If it stops streaming again, let us know, let one of us know. Then the last thing I have is for the park road and the, out of the pool, and that is, I haven't gotten a quote, because I just came up today, was getting some calcium chloride down in front of the pool and the road to the park.
Don't put any calcium on the road to the ball diamond. Is that what you're here?
Right.
Because the county, I talked to the county, and they're going to go in and they're going to reshape it and put some gravel on it, so.
Okay.
Get rid of the puddles and stuff. Not sure when they're going to do it, but they shouldn't put the calcium down.
Right, because it won't do any good.
Right.
They put something down there already.
They put some new gravel. They put a new load in there.
Because it was a lot better shape than it was the last time.
When was the last time you drove it?
Uh, just, um, yesterday.
Well, maybe Jay just sent blade in there and did something with it. I guess talking the road as a part.
Just the road going into, we're talking down here, right?
The ball diamond, Olson.
Do you want to get the shape for the gitter, the mud on each side?
We're going to try and get that curb open that runs to the street, that's usually where they're gravel, but I haven't been home there, so maybe they, maybe they blew it up.
If you're okay with that, and then we could put it on after they're done, but if you guys are okay with that, I just need a motion to approve that.
Let me check with Jay tomorrow and see if they're, please do with it.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Otherwise, if you guys are okay with us doing it in the other spots, so we can do it. I think normally, last time it was about seven or eight thousand, but it lasted the whole year, so that was really cool. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Where does that come out of? Different departments?
It'll come some out of streets, and we can take some out of pool, but is where most of it came from last time.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason, to allow that foot course, the chlorate at the two spots. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? There was one other thing, and this is just so you're aware of it. I just found out about it this weekend, and so it happened after the beautification, so we'll probably talk about it there. But we do have some noxious weeds in the community, in, in some residential areas, actually. So there is some leafy sprigs that popped up around, so letters will go out, very similar to the grass, because we have that in the ordinance as well, that they need to take care of it, but hoping we didn't have to deal with that in town, but I guess we are. Hoping, I'm guessing it's in two areas, and it's in tall grass areas, so if we can get it taken care of, hopefully we won't have to use chemical on it. Next, we'll go on to city officers. JR, do you have anything for tonight? Casey?
Um, I have two things that I wanted to discuss. One is the winery that was at the farmer's market for the Between Two Cities, Between Two Cities Farmer's Market. They are wanting to put in for a special event permit. We sent the new permit that JR put together over the weekend. They haven't gotten it in yet, but it would be the same jargon as what they put on their one that was approved for Hillsborough Days. Would you guys be willing to, would you be willing to make a motion to approve the winery be at the farmer's market contingent upon receiving proper paperwork? That was a question that I just wanted to put at you, because the next one's going to be Thursday next week, and you won't have another meeting until July 1. Additionally, I was to ask about the fee, would it be a twenty-five dollar fee per farmer's market, or would you guys be willing to negotiate a little bit? So, that's the question.
I think all the others paid twenty-five dollars per farmer's market reel, so it would have been the house.
Well, I think it was twenty-five dollars per application. So if they had more than one on the application, then I think we only charged, does that sound right, Sarah?
What was that?
Twenty-five dollars per application, not per di, per time, it's twenty-five. So it's up to them whether they do it once, twice, or...
So they just pay a flat fee, and then they just tend, they can tend all the way through to June, September, that one application?
If they put all the dates on there already.
Oh, oh, they put all the dates.
They have to put all the dates in the application.
Because that brewery that came last year, they just put all the dates down and...
So that's the request. Would you guys be willing to, to entertain that, having the brewery, or brewery, having the winery be approved contingent upon receiving proper paperwork is the, is the request.
I think in the past, where I wanted to, to go there, was that ever approved? Because I don't know.
I guess I haven't worked with them yet. This one is Rookery Rock Winery.
Correct, this is different, so just with the course of alcohol, I don't know. Where applying those approvals.
I saw them there, but something did once, but, anyway.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm assuming he's just going to copy his paperwork and go through these.
That, that was what I was kind of relayed.
Count on Thursday, so.
Yep.
I really simplified the permit, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't...
No, I'm okay. Are you okay with it, JR?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve that, contingent?
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, guys. My other item that I wanted to discuss with you all, last week we had gotten an email, and I believe I forwarded on to you guys, about a delinquent utility bill. They, lie heap was denied, so that was relayed to us, got put back onto the disconnect list. We were further relayed that the Social Services through the county would be paying the full bill. So initially, I thought, okay, this is great. But the question I wanted to ask you guys was, the county commissioners don't meet until the same day as shut offs happen, so we're not guaranteed to get payment that day for that specific residence. Do you guys want me to, do you want our office to wait to see payment come through, or do you want to follow the deadline set on the disconnect list?
You say Social Services is paying them?
That's what I was relayed via email. She would be sending it to County Commission for payment.
It was confirmed by Social Services?
It was.
I would say as long as Social Services is guaranteeing the payment.
I have no problem waiting until after the meeting.
I don't either. Meeting's tomorrow, right?
Twenty-fifth, so shut-off day next week.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to say, there's County Commission tomorrow, so...
Which we could find out that day if it was approved or not approved, and then...
Go from there?
Go from there.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have.
Which number is it on?
It would be number thirty-five.
It's pretty substantial.
Yeah, which is kind of why I asked, so. Okay, well, I will keep you guys notified of what I find out next Tuesday.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything from the Sheriff's Office? Jason? On the beautification side, just a couple updates. It looks like the ones that were supposed to go to court did not show, because it was, they're pushed off until August again, I think is the date. And JR and I and Charlie, at some point, need to sit down and kind of go through a few things to make sure what we can and can't do. Mostly it comes down to the language of what do we need in there, so that we can have the authority to go in and remove the items if needed, if that, that all due diligence has been, been made, and all of those things. That was something that Charlie had talked to me about, and I just, it's been busy the last couple weeks, so hopefully we can find some time soon. There is...trying to figure it out in my notes. So there's some that we have held off on, intending them to get charged based on what we've been doing. One was...310, so it'd be F-310 East Caledonia. We've gotten no response back from that one since the letter's been sent. 322 First Avenue Northwest, they had reached out, but nothing has been done, so that'd 218 Second Street Southwest. And J, 109 Third, Third Street Northeast. Those four have been sitting and waiting. And L, we are waiting on, hearing on that one. We did get notice that it's in probate. So what, F, H, I, and J, if you'd like to move forward with those. So what, F, H, I, and J, if you'd like to move forward with those.
Were each of those followed with the city office complaint?
Yep. At one point, they were, yeah. And letters were sent by the beautification, no response, so then it's forwarded on to here, which JR would send a letter, and we'd also ask the sheriff's department to charge at the same time.
The letters are you talking about, the F, I, J, or...
F, H, I, and J.
F, H.
Would be the four.
Well, I guess my recommendation is, would be that we issue the letters, have JR do the letters, and then have the sheriff's office deliver them, and then once we can, not to vote on anything until we can assure that they receive the letters, a personal delivery, just like most other things that we deal with. Hope you might have.
So once they've gotten it?
Once they've gotten it, like, don't, JR, don't we normally give them like a timeframe in that letter to...
The letter, when I send them to the sheriff's office, there's another timeframe by, perhaps for a minute of the letter, but you guys moved, sent them?
We'll send them, but yeah, if you don't want to charge them, that's fine, but that was the recommendation Charlie and Steve had made before, was to do it at the same time, so.
I guess I, not knowing that we for sure that they for surely have received it, I would, with most of the other stuff we do, I feel more comfortable if we send a letter, give them that grace period, and then if they haven't complied with that, then we go back and charge them.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, whatever you guys have a different feeling.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, because some of them might have done some where, you know, it's like completely...
A lot of the times, it's just a reminder. It's a gentle reminder that, they don't always see it as a gentle reminder, but that's what it's meant to be.
Just like the grass moving, a lot of them that got letters from only half moved. Someone's kind of...
And there was a few more that got sent out, possibly.
I'm fine with Jason's recommendation.
Okay, do I have a motion then to approve those four, to have JR send the notice, and then the hearing be set at the next commission meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Or the next one, depending on when you can get them out?
I have a motion to do that, send the letters, to have the sheriff deliver the letters, that way we know they got them.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
That was Bon Star Hotel in the O'Ginig, right?
Yep. And maybe just make it...
Okay, thank you.
The next commission meeting after receipt of the letter?
Yeah, that's usually what I do. Before a note, it's probably...
I can't remember, but I think that's what you...
That's been a minute, but I'll look to make sure, so.
Just so they have a little bit of time. Okay. Colonial Life is here tonight to give us a little update, so if you want to come on up to the mic.
Thank you, can you hear me good?
Yep.
Perfect, all right. We came in about a month ago, met with the employees, everyone that wanted to talk talked. We got, I think a little over half of the people some benefits. The question of last time, however, was, is it a good idea to do the dental, too? I have created a packet to pass around, so the notes that I have are right behind me. So we can add value to the employee package and lower cost for the city, and they have access to 29 different dentists that are in-network within a 50-mile radius, so the list of where you can go as far as providers is in the folder. And if for some reason the dentist you'd like to go to, Casey mentioned to me, for example, the one she really likes is out-of-network, we have an option for that, too. Our out-of-network plan still costs less than what you're paying for now, and it's still of greater benefit, it's just not as large of a difference, so.
Do you remember what, were you paying currently? Or was that on the list?
It's in there, so.
Oh, it's in?
Yeah. If they're done with this one, you can have the other.
Did you guys get a folder, too?
We got, yep.
So for dental, you guys are paying that much, this is what it could be, and then that's annual savings, just for dental. Vision's right underneath it, and it looks similar, just not as large of a number.
Is, hey, Dan, is that for the plan good through the 15th of July, or is that the one after the 15th of July?
That's for the one that's currently available now, so as of July 15th, Colonial Life will be sunsetting this plan. If you get in before then, you are grandfathered in, and it is rate-stable forever, so there won't be a price increase for this as long as you have the plan. They're updating it and making a larger plan that costs more, which is technically three times better than what you have now. In my opinion, I don't think anyone needs that much dental insurance. This is kind of the sweet spot, it's the one that I have for myself and my wife, and it's worked pretty well for us, so. And the city wishes it on a Thursday, so they like it so far.
If we sign up for it today, then we're grandfathered in, correct?
Correct, yep. And you will not see a rate increase from us. I think you get reevaluated every other year from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and usually it doesn't go down.
And this amount would be guaranteed for as long as we have?
Yep, as long as you have the plan, the rate stays the same.
And did you talk with the guys? Were they okay with it? Or you guys?
We, we did discuss it when Dan met with all of us. We all met one day in the...
Yeah.
Commission chambers.
Great.
And we, you know, we talked about the benefits of, of this plan versus Blue Cross Blue Shield. We, we have a couple employees waiting to see what the commission will do. One of them has said that in the event that it's not, you know, approved at this meeting, they will sign up for this plan, you know, on their own. But yeah, no, no other feedback on the dental, or dental vision yet, so.
It's not earth-shattering stuff. I thought, I thought it could save the cities some money and give the employees better stuff, so.
Well, $3,000 is still $3,000.
The dental comes with vision rider on that, please, or does it separate, too?
The vision is separate. The vision costs, I believe, is on the other one, but I have the costs for the...
It's on the other one. Yep, give me a word on that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Vision is a rider you can add on to the dental, but you, the deal is you can't buy vision individually by itself. You can get dental with vision or just that. It still doesn't make sense to me why they've done that, but...
Yeah.
Is the, I know you had a nice thing for the, the dental, but is there a nice comparison on the vision side? Is it comparable?
Um, the vision is just about the same.
Okay.
I didn't see really any differences. I think like $10 more for classes and contacts per year, which is a sizable amount, so. I'm not sure if that's actually the word, so.
But overall, it saves us $800.
Most vision plans are all copied and pasted from each other, so there's really only two vision insurance companies, everyone just borrows the literature, but they cost different amounts, so ours is the lowest expense I've seen in this group of years, so.
Does the state have a...
Yeah.
With Blue Cross Blue Shield, yep.
My suggestion, if we're going to switch one, to do both.
It's, yeah, it's, um, it still costs a...
Incomparable.
The same as what they have now?
Yeah, the dental's massively better, but the vision is essentially the same.
Is there anyone against it?
Nobody's, nobody's been against it, you know, um, yeah, just the concern of having out-of-network dentists, you know, it's been about the only discussion point that you and I have had.
Yeah.
You know, and...
But they're out of network as it is right now for you guys, so.
Great, we don't have any in-town that are in-network.
In-town, so.
You just got a good list of dental, I thought, but...
I don't have any dentists.
I haven't either since I started doing this.
Yeah, it's pretty good, it's a good list.
Mine's around there, that's all I care about.
Mine's too, but...
Oh, you guys have access to this if you want, that, too.
And just so you, if you're not, don't remember, the employees are paid full family on both plans, so it's comes up, it's paid by the city for them.
You would have to decide what you do with the difference, so.
The difference?
Yeah, of what your current is spending now, so you have to find...
Oh, don't worry, there wouldn't be an issue there.
I hate springing that problem up.
We just spend that much in...
One more headache for us.
I mean, one bill would cover that, so. Would you, if you would like to switch, we just need a motion, and then the changeover would happen at a maturity date, correct? Or when would it start?
Um, I could be here, you know, we can take care of it, but it would be effective July 1st, so you'd be in before the deadline, and it'd be just fine.
Right, if you guys want to stick with this plan, so we're grandfathered in.
Those are going to take the dog of our other plan?
You write a letter to Blue Cross Blue Shield and say, we're going to open enrollment, we've talked about it, and we would like to discontinue our relationship, and then they say, okay, vote it. Written notice is what's required, and it could be as easy as any. So I've done this for 19 counties and 10 cities the last three years, so it goes pretty smoothly. They've never bad it in a IAT, or anything.
It used to be a, you know, for insurance, and it's usually just, you just terminate it, it's about, and then they terminate it.
Business as usual. Hopefully, they come up with a better idea, but it's, it's the way it goes.
If the city staff has no problem with it, I can make a motion, it's changing, if I'm on them.
Is there a second?
Seconded by...
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Thank you.
I pull it out, you're best to look at it if you want, unless you want to learn more, then you're welcome to do so.
Like learning?
Like learning, go ahead, that's yours. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, social media archiving, we just need to make a determination on that if we want to do it or not.
Yep.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
My opinion on it at this time, I don't know that there's enough communities that are doing it. Is it worth the value of it?
I agree.
I agree, I agree.
I guess we don't need a motion.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Did you agree, Dave?
I agreed. I don't think it's...
Commissioner Electy, would you agree?
We're putting him on the spot.
Would you agree? I'm just wondering, because you start next month, so.
Bye, Dan.
Whether or not we should spend the, I think it's...
Yeah, like, for the, for the first package, it was like four or five grand. For the less services package, it was close to three.
Three grand for social networking, archiving. Well, I'm just curious, in case, you know, came back next meeting, we brought it up and wanted...
That is a good answer.
Good answer.
Answer, you're learning already.
You'll be warmed up, so.
All right, the audit 2023, we need to decide we, what we are going to do, if we're going to go with IBALE or the state. We never, did we ever get a number from the state?
No number from the state. Heath and I, Heath Erickson and I had a phone call, and he asked, what kind of a deadline were we looking at to get the 23 audit done? I said, by the end of this year would be great, and he said that was easily doable. They're pretty booked right now. So yeah, no, no number, though, was given, no phone calls, no emails, so.
Right.
Well, I don't know. So they, what he had said was he would be sending me a quote written, he wouldn't give me a quote over the phone, so, and I have yet to get a quote written.
Isn't the state supposed to provide that service to the...
No, that never got passed.
It didn't?
Nope.
Okay.
They still have to look at our audits, even if IBALE looks at them, does it, it still goes to the state, doesn't cost us anything, but they have to look at them and sign off on it. My concern is, yes, it's going to cost us a little bit more, but it gets it done, it could put Casey in a good spot to know where she's at before the end of the year, because the last time that we had the state do the audit, it got put off and nobody even caught it for six months or eight months.
Was there a quote for 30 first?
Is it 30?
For IBALE?
Yep.
Between 30 and 35.
It all depends on time-wise.
I, I haven't worked with the state on an audit, but I will say with IBALE, they were highly thorough. They have every single document imaginable from '20 through '22. They know all of your guys' bonds, they know all of your debt service, they know what kind of taxes you bring in. They are pretty highly equipped to continue to do audits going forward, and they did, they did say, now that they have everything, all the files that they needed for those three years audits, future audits wouldn't be near as rigorous. They'd be thorough, highly thorough, but the amount of work to do on, in our office wouldn't be nearly as extensive, because it was, I don't even know how many documents we sent over. We're happy to do it again, but, you know, I'd, I'd really enjoy staying with one auditor or another, just because it seems to kind of flow well, I guess, so. Whatever you guys decide, you know, we'll be happy with, but there's just my two cents, so.
My one concern is what, what would the state charge you? Would they charge you 10, 15,000? Would they charge you 30,000, 25,000?
I think it'd be not 30,000, but I don't think it'd be 15 like it was, they're steadily been going up.
I think I sent you guys the numbers from the last time that they did, let me pull up that email.
Like I said, Paul, I'd be more in favor of switching in a year than today.
How do I get it done, but get on the list for next year ahead of time?
Possibly, because, one, we're getting it done so that, we were in this spot before where we didn't get caught up, and when our new auditor came in, we can get that done. I mean, within a year of Casey starting, we should be close to having it done, so.
Just don't want to get behind on it.
Right, and we were way too behind the last time, so.
I know 35 is a lot of, 35,000's a lot of money, but...
Didn't the state know that they've been in this year?
They, he did tell me over the phone that by the end of the year was a, you know, that was an okay deadline, that they could work with that, yeah.
They also didn't have an answer for us, I know you guys didn't hear about it. I know you guys didn't hear about it a lot, but like I said, they, the state, Heath is the person that we were, had us the last time. And he, I mean, we basically, the ball got dropped for six months with no communication. We asked, nothing happened, nothing happened. And all we got was, well, one of our employees left and so the one that we were supposed to have left and left the office and didn't get it done. And then.
Drawn on.
It got drawn on and they still didn't get it finished. And that was supposed to be the audit that they just finished, that Hyde Bailey just finished for us.
When would Hyde Bailey have it done?
They could have it done within a couple weeks, the 23 audit.
Two weeks?
They said a couple of weeks. Yep, the, the very first week that they have opened to receive. The first week that they have opened to receive documents and communication from us were tentatively scheduled for. That's that first full week of July, I believe it starts the 7th, 7th through the 8th. Yeah, yep.
We'd have it done before, even the end, which would be good for our budgeting for next year.
Talking about budgeting, where would this come from then?
Well, let me look.
You love that question, Kate.
I should have prepared better.
It would come out of the general fund, whether or not there'd be enough in there currently. I don't believe so, so we might have to do some transfers at the end of the year to make it work.
You'd have to make an amendment, yeah, to your budget. If you, if there's line items you don't spend as much out of, you know, then you can make the amendment to adjust those line items or do exactly what Levi said, do a transfer.
Is it a requirement of the state to do it every year?
Every two years.
Every two years.
Every two years, yep. It, you know, and it depends upon your commissioner, your council, on how responsible to your citizens you want to be. Sometimes it's nice having it done year to year, just because you always know where you're at. Every two years, it's not terrible, that's what Century Code states, but, you know, just, just depends on your peace of mind, I guess, on how you want to have your financials presented year to year.
Which I think after this, we can maybe look at it two, every two years, but I think right now we just need to get fixed. Because that, we believe we're all caught up, but let's get last year.
To me, my concern goes back to this thing that I stated before. We just redid our full budget and raised our taxes a bunch and now we're already like talking about maybe not having money for. I, I really think we need to start spending within our budget.
Rick, the other.
I'd, I'd like to make a comment, Ken. I remember when we were drowning to get, you know, to get your books audited and get the mess cleaned up that you had. And I think you're, you'd be remiss in not staying with what you have. So they, and you would think that once they got to the goal I'd like to have, it would become cheaper and it's better to stay with one. An auditor who does not rely on the state because you, you, you know, I think what you, what you said Levi is true and I, I think, I think you should, just as a taxpayer, nothing more, but I, I think if it was me, I would, I would stay right where you're at with the, I think you, you know, right where you're at all the time.
I kind of agree, it's just, it's good protection for the city, just all around. So, I, I realize, you know, the money, speaking of a lot of money.
Is there a way we can maybe, I mean, if it's only going to take a couple of days, can we go back and see if they could get the timeline of the state, approximate cost and timelines? If they're saying I can't get it until November, we don't want to wait that long, you know, but, and again, maybe it won't take some more days to.
I can ask.
But what's the reasoning, why is this state being such a pain in the neck?
You're understaffed.
Is that what it works?
They, they're severely understaffed right now. Well, they've done a lot of changes. Hillsborough isn't applicable to this, but cities who bring in less than $2 million in revenue get to do their own audits. They get to do their own financial reporting. Since you guys bring in more than $2 million in a year, you know, from your different revenue sources, you're not applicable to do that. That's how overburdened the state auditor's office is. Right now, they have interns working for their office just to stay caught up on the smaller cities audits. And they, they've recognized that they are behind schedule. They've gotten a few more staff now where they can take on these auditing, you know, tasks for, for cities. But their timeframe is still out quite a bit, so. And I know, just in seeing the discussion back and forth from other auditors around the state, you know, not that it's interns' fault, but it's been difficult dealing with interns because they don't know how to communicate with local auditors, like, you know, like people who have done it for umpteen years. So, so that's been the struggle that I've kind of seen. You know, they, they do a great job, they try their hardest, but it's, it's been a struggle for small cities dealing with the auditor's office, so.
So unless we have a motion, we're going to have to hold off on it again, so. Do I have a motion to approve going with Hyde Bailey or?
If we're holding off, to wait to see what the state says, is that what we're holding off for?
I can email them and hope to have an answer before the next meeting, that'd be July 1st.
Timeline, if they say they can't fill out the, what's that timeline like, what's that cost like?
Solid timeline and a price.
Is it they drag the people things, they don't want to delay it too far, but.
Or if they say they can't have it till November or whatever, that's kind of like we love. I know they kind of give you a broad statement as far as by the end of the year, well, that's, guess what? It probably will be the end of the year then, if you can't narrow it down.
Okay. We will hold off then until. Public Works Superintendent, we will keep looking on that. As I informed you guys, or Casey let you guys know that she did turn us down on the position. I worked really hard, even gave her another day to try even thinking about it and convince her, but she did not, was not interested based on some family concerns. So we will open those back up and try to see what we can do. On a good note, bad. It is. On a good note, I think we have a couple applications for electrical alignment to look into and one for Public Works employee. So, we'll work on those. Next item, unless anybody else has anything on that. Next item is the Mexican Village Wholesale Encroachment. JR was kind enough to make a resolution. All we have to do is fill in the blanks and approve. And that is just for, they're about five feet over and one portion, is that correct, JR?
Yep, if you scroll down, I have this attachment. Because I like pictures skipped out when it goes to the next one.
Go to the next one, okay.
Now I have to rotate, but you can run sideways. Perfect, perfect. This will be on the south side of the building, that there is third out. That's the encroachment right there. And the EC units and that little stick out from the building is where they have freezer units. It's been there for a long time. Yeah, decades.
Yeah.
Are we getting broader? I know who's going to answer.
They're selling.
They're selling.
They sold, actually. It's contingent on this though getting approved or having some approval from the city, from a purchaser, just from what I've understood. And during the sale, they did a legal survey to make sure everything's as close to being.
At least it's not encroaching somebody's yard.
Right.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion then, Dave?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? All those are, Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. You're hoping on that one, JR.
It's better, it's not as fun, so.
Right. Next item is the permit for the senior center for a local event permit.
Who makes the motion?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Last new business is $2,000 for the fireworks display and the $100 per fireman that helped put it off for the 4th of July and we do that every year.
They'll have about six guys as well.
I'll make the motion.
Jason makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Last thing I have is, thank you, Dave, for your many years of service to the community of Hillsborough. We appreciate it. I appreciate it, whether we've seen eye to eye all the time or not, we still were able to come up and meet and do things on our own, so.
Thank you.
Have fun and go to the lake, spend more time with the family.
I have a statement I'd like to read.
Okay.
I would like to thank the residents of Hillsborough, who have allowed me to be a part of the Hill'sboro City Commission for the past 14 years. I'd like to say thank you also to the past and present commission, who I've had the pleasure to spend two Mondays of the month with. We didn't always agree on everything, but by the end of the night, we mostly figured it out and we're still able to talk to each other. And I also do not want to forget our very important and dedicated city employees. I enjoyed working with every one of you and I will miss that. We as commissioners make the policies, but it is employees that make Hillsborough work. We must, must respect them and continue to treat them well. Good luck to our new commissioner, John Myers, welcome aboard. In closing, I would like to say thank you to my wife Karen for encouraging me to run to the commission back in 2010. She's always been my support, thank you.
On that though, thanks to the city employees for helping out in Hillsborough days.
Yes.
Yes, we're very fortunate, we got a good crew down there and, and the girls even took time to put a float together and Jay and all them down there, they were, were out with everything.
They won't let me lead it, Louis, that I drive people down.
Now you've got to earn that right.
Maybe you can ride a little kid more, it would be next year.
Did you lead it?
What?
The parade.
Did you ever lead the parade?
Did you do it at a good speed?
About 27 times. That's like there's gold in you, you don't even know.
Yeah.
Don't rode it, then we won't be able to have candy like in Fargo. Then nobody will be happy because there won't be any candy. Is there anybody that would like to adjust the commission tonight?
Still very hard to hear.
I can't turn it up anymore. Otherwise it'll squeal.
I brought the chairs closer for the reason.
Yeah, for some reason I noticed that tonight.
I don't know what it is.
He's got that voice center.
I can hear it too.
Well, it's sitting right in front of him.
It's sitting right in front of him, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I noticed that too.
We may have to move these.
Then we're going to have to lean into them when we talk to them. John, are you really loud? Because then I could keep it closer to me.
Unfortunately, I'm not.
I mean, we could try to get more of these, but man, it took a long time to get them, so. For the recording, because obviously we lost it again.
I, I quit trying after like the third time.
Yeah, it's, so we'll have to get, halt that in and see if it's the computer or what it is, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there anything else for the good order? If not, Ray.
I would like to thank Dave Zappata for all of your conservative way of putting this party up.
Thank you, Ray.
Anything else for the good order? If not, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
For the last time, Dave. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. But Dave, you're still not done till the end of the month.
I know.
Thank you, sir. It's always been a pleasure working with you.